Good evening, Lord, just thank you for this evening. Thank you for the many blessings you've given the town of Stallings. Be with us tonight as we go about doing the business of our town and has guided us and give us the courage to do what was best for our town. Be with our police officers tonight and our men and women are serving. Just be around them, protect them, put your shield around them. I also lift up a special preacher, Phil Witt, who used to be preacher over First Baptist Indian Trail, who's battling cancer, is undergoing some treatment, and he needs our prayer, and they're having a prayer circle for him tonight, so can't be there, but I know you are. So in everything we do and say, we give you all the praise and glory. Jesus Christ name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any public comments? No public comments tonight, so we got our consent agenda there. And then anybody have any changes, questions, amendments? We do have Stallings District S established, so let's get that taken care of. Thank you, Melanie and staff. So can I get a motion on that?
Wait a minute, if it would. Alex, were we deleting one and adding one?
Yeah, I would suggest deleting agenda item policy for assess.
Yeah, we ain't got to the, we ain't got to the, this is consent agenda.
Move approval.
Excuse me.
You're ahead of your time.
Motion by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Shaw. All in favor? As have it. All right, reports, none from me, any from Laurie? He had anything for us tonight? All right, David?
Not this week.
Brad?
David asked me to give a report, and I'll be happy to, about what's happening at the, the acronym is CRTPO, CARTPO. It stands for Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization. So David asked me what's been going on over there lately, and I suspect that it's because of the, and he didn't say this, but I suspect it's because of the MTC. I'll give the acronyms the best I can, Metropolitan Transit Commission's discussion and article in the paper this week about not funding or not having enough funds to bring the silver line through Matthews and the Stallings, and instead of reprioritizing it to fund the red line, which is a commuter rail up through Huntersville to Lake Norman. That became news this week. It relates to David's question about CARTPO. I'm vice chair this year. This is the year that we review what's called a memorandum of understanding that this board will vote on perhaps this fall. I'll make this quick, and we can add this to an agenda item for big discussion, but the long story short is, we agree every 10 years or so of a cost share for the towns that participate. There's 24 members, including towns, counties, North Carolina Department of Transportation, and the Metropolitan Transit Commission. So it's a large group that meets monthly. They decide how to allocate federal dollars into local road projects. That's the big, that's the big deal. So in that, there's no transit sort of policy work that they do. However, there's been debate this year more than ever about the memorandum of understanding and how we all will work together on a couple of issues. We've got consensus generally on a new cost sharing arrangement that would be good for our town in that it would lower our dues, which aren't large, 13,800, I believe, something like that, don't quote me, but it would lower our dues by $500, adding more to the counties because it's never been funded per capita. It's been sort of an amalgamation of how you fund this organization. The bigger contentious issue has become more contentious because of the toll roads in the northern part of the county that were approved by CARTPO several years ago as a lightning rod issue, if you recall, in that part of the community of our region. Several people have questioned the weighted vote provisions of the MOU. The weighted vote provision, as it sounds, gives more weight to larger jurisdictions. Charlotte, as an example, well, excuse me, Stallings as an example, with 16 or so thousand residents, has one vote in the CARTPO body. Waxall, by virtue of having 20,000 people, is up for another vote, so it'll have two, 20,000 or more. Charlotte, because it has 900, almost a million people, has 31 votes. So you see, so there's been a lot of debate, is that weighted vote fair? So we've got two different camps sort of emerging on the board. I sit in the it's fair camp, just to be transparent with you. Others, including our good friends in Matthews and the northern towns, are saying it's not fair. But from a practical standpoint, and this is what I'll leave you with tonight after a very long update, the original MOU envisioned Charlotte having a lot of the weight, such that the MOU cannot be revised. The weighted vote, therefore, cannot be revised unless there's a three-fourth majority members changing the MOU. Oddly enough, as you might imagine, Charlotte's weighted vote makes it impossible for the other members to change that vote at that supermajority criteria. So there's a lot to talk about. It will get more news perhaps as the MTC debates light rail coming to Matthews and Stallings. But it's a great question, and I think our friends in Matthews are really, they're good people, and I think they come from the right place. I come from a different spot and made that publicly clear as your representative, and we'll talk about this more at length as we go into the fall. By the way, the MOU is not required to be amended, so there's a good chance it never actually makes it to a vote. I could predict that perhaps. Iredell Mecklenburg in Union, yes ma'am? Yeah.
All right.
Okay, that's my report.
Well, congratulations on being vice chair, though.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Big honor. I mean, Linda was, I think, vice chair.
Yeah, and I'll say just another point, we pay 13 or so thousand a year. We benefited millions of dollars in funding, largely for the Potter Pleasant Plains intersection, which Ms. Paxton was helpful to get a discretionary grant, and other things like planning grants. So we're net positive by multiple, multiple factors, and it's a good organization. But I guess that there is some logical flaws in the makeup, but the question is, is it worth the fight to try to change it when it's hard?
All right.
I don't think so.
Thank you, Brad.
You're welcome.
All right, Alex, what do you got for us tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Three items tonight. First is, I wanted to report to y'all, I'd authorized our staff to apply for a grant, specifically Ms. Donnelly and our Parks Department, related to a $5,000 grant for the NC Healthy Aging Initiative. It's for a Walk with Ease program, which provides structured walking activities, support and resources for our senior community members who wish to increase their physical activity. Doesn't require any matching funds from the town. Additionally, there are no reoccurring costs, and so it's really 100% grant. So I just wanted to report that to y'all and let y'all know there'll be a budget amendment likely coming probably early next fiscal year, just to account for that. Additionally, we provided a budget line item transfer for the past month. As you know, we're going to try to do that just for transparency purposes, so I wanted to submit that for the record, as well as Chief Franks, do you mind giving us an update, please?
So K9 Lily passed away earlier in the year. Last week, Josh Smith traveled to Miami to pick up his new dog, or to pick his new dog. And as you can see, this is K9 Chase. Just a couple of quick pictures on his trip back. And real quick, he's a two-year-old German Shepherd born in Hungary, passive alert dog, unlike Lily, who is an aggressive alert dog, sits when he gets narc, or alerts on drugs. Josh has said extremely sociable, just like Lily was. He's in week two of his five-week canine training, and they'll get ready to get certified as, through the canine profession, and then Customs of Border Patrol certification for the task force he's part of. Chase's name is originally Venom, which Josh did not like as much, and I'll be honest, Chase from Paw Patrol, if it wasn't for the manager, I would have known who it was. But I think it's a great, a great fit. So I just want to let you know that he's in the process with the new dogs. And we begin, we thank the council for your support with our canine program.
Thank you, Chief.
As a proud dad of a five-year-old and four-year-old, we think the kids, I know the kids are going to like the name Chase. Unfortunately, the training schedule couldn't meet it to allow us to have the kids pick it again, but again, the kids love Paw Patrol, so.
All right. Anything else, Alex?
No, sir, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
All righty. Now we'll get the agenda approval. So yeah, we're going to delete number seven, and then we wanted to add event attendance policy. Is that a good description, Alex?
Sure, maybe vendor attend.
Vendor event attendance policy. We'll put that on number seven. Please say that. And was there anything else, Alex?
Yes, sir, I believe that's it, unless there's anything else the board would like.
Yeah, anything else? All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, as adjusted.
All right, motion by Mr. Shaw, second by Laurie. All in favor? As have it. All righty. All right, first up is our fiscal year 2024-25 budget. I'll open the public hearing, and then Alex, did you want to deliver your message or make a few comments? I know it's a public hearing.
Not at this time. I'm happy to, if you'd like to.
No, the council doesn't, I mean, you've explained it in much detail, so I'll open it up as a public hearing. Is anybody, did anybody sign up to speak here? Nobody's wanting to speak on our public hearing on the budget? Well, just for the record, we are having the first tax increase since I can remember, three cents tax increase, and so everybody realizes how much everything has gone up. Took my wife to Jersey Mike's tonight, paid $25 for two ham and cheese sandwiches. So that just shows you how much has gone, everything's gone up. It's unbelievable. So cost of paving and the whole nine yards, so. All right, well, I'll close the public hearing. Nobody's here to speak. We're not going to vote on it tonight. We're going to vote it on, on the 24th, so it gives the citizens a chance to review it. It's online. You can call any council member and ask any questions, and we can explain this three cents tax increase. So we'll leave it at that. All right, next up is our 27-25 Ole Monroe Road update, so thank y'all for being here tonight.
Thank you for having us, Ken.
Want to let you know, we did receive a response from the prospective tenant. They responded to the LOI. We have maybe some copies there for those who may or may not have seen it. And all these things, I would say, are negotiable. I think they came back with a fairly broad ask. I would say they asked for everything they could. We took the time to call back the prospective tenant today and let them know that it seemed like they weren't negotiating what I would say fair or what would be customary. Some of the items that he took off didn't match with what I generally see in my real estate experience. So we went over what those were, and he wanted me to convey that he is definitely negotiable. We found out that he had a broker friend who's helping him out, and so he probably came in at the last minute and just said, ask for all this stuff, and that's how it got back to us. So he wanted you to know that he wants to be here and that he's willing to negotiate on these items, and if asked, I will tell you what I think, but certainly the decision is yours and yours alone to make. So we can go over some of those if you want to, if now's the appropriate time, or we can do it at another time. Whenever you tell me to do so, I will.
Well, hit the highlights.
Sure.
Because, you know, the one thing I kept hearing about is the paying us revenue, paying us tax money on his revenue.
So that's not uncommon to pay a percent rent for restaurants. You see it all the time in national tenants. Basically, any national tenant you see will probably have a percent rent. If you have a piece of real estate that causes your business to do better, the person who owns the real estate gets a piece of that because it's the real estate that provides you that additional revenue. I understand that this might not, this is definitely not a national tenant. He's not used to it. I think you could be very negotiable on that. If it doesn't work out and you still want the tenant, that's not something that I would down the hill for.
Well, I think part of his problem was, he felt like he was investing $2 million in that.
A lot of money.
Lot of money.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But any asking for a rent, some type of abatement on rent based on that $2 million and we're giving to him?
That's right, correct. So the rent abatement he's asking for, we thought was going to be two years. He came back and asked for three. I think three's too much. I think he'll probably be open within 12 months. I can't see it would take much longer than 12 months to get open. If you gave six months to your soft cost, being your architects, engineers, attorneys, what have you, and then six more months for your, for your build-out, I think he could be open this time next year by the end of the summer. The caveat with that, I don't want to put dates in everybody's mind of when it's going to be open. The caveat to that is, we found out today he's getting the SBA loan. SBA always tells you, you're going to be quick, fast, and easy. It's never quick, fast, and easy. They take a long time, they do everything but take, you know, your firstborn, and it just takes a long time to get it done, but it does get done and efficiently. So they, they're not allowed to take a lien on your property, which you should never allow. If it comes up, the answer should be no. But I told, I warned them of that today, that any lender may ask for that, the quick answer is no, you cannot take a lien on our property for your loan if you don't have the assets to do it. SBA, that's what SBA exists, quite frankly, to help people get their businesses started. So as you'll see, there's a budget that we got today from a potential contractor. Guys can pass this around. I don't know, we probably don't have enough copies. Somebody's welcome to have mine. I think they've done a good job of outlining what needs to be done to get this off the ground and running, and gives you a good idea what, what he will do. To the tune of about 1.7 here, obviously that leaves a little bit of room for him in case he has to do anything that's unexpected, and you can always expect the unexpected when you're going in and renovating a building. Many times you'll wish you just tore it down and started over, but we're not going to do that here. He does have good bone structure to work with, with the, with the building that's there presently, and so I think that's going to be more than fair for him to work with that.
Well, I asked you to hit the summaries, and then I started asking questions, so go ahead.
That's all right.
Give us the highlights.
I'm here for you. So next, we have, they asked for extensions, which we already know that apparently the broker, whoever he asked questions, had no idea that we, they've been told multiple times that 10 years is 10 years max. There's not 10 years and one day, it's just 10 years. You can renegotiate at the end of 10 years, but that's all we can do. And here, you can see they've asked for some renewals there. And just above that, they asked for you to negate the first month's rent. I don't do that. You've got to have money to come to the table with. If you don't have money to come to the table with, I assume you don't have any, so show me you have some. He said it's only $6,000, that's not a problem. We can easily put that back in there.
Is he okay with, I know he won first right of refusal to buy it after 10 years, so I'm not, you know, what's the, what's the law? Explain that to somebody.
Very specific statutes on selling property. You can do it at public auction, or you can do, if it's someone makes an offer to purchase, you still have to have time that someone can do an upset bid. Because it's the taxpayers' dollars, they want to make sure that you're getting the highest price possible. So, I mean, you have to sell it to whoever brings the most money to the table.
And that is on a 10-year lease? What if we leased it for nine years, or can you do that?
You can, you can do a lease for less than 10 years. Any lease longer than 10 years is treated the same manner as if you were selling the property.
So if we did a nine-year lease, could we give him first right of?
You can, you can never do first right of refusal.
Can you never do that?
Never, no.
All right, well, that's, just we'll do a 10-year.
So explain what you just said, because that.
I get that part.
From an acquisition standpoint, so.
They have to go to a bid process for the, for the whole world to see.
That makes sense.
But you made mention of if it's, if it's longer than a 10-year lease, it could be applicable to a purchase.
You have to treat it just like a purchase.
In state law, it's 32 years, but for their purposes, it's their statutes.
And this is according to North Carolina law.
Right.
Because it's, because it's government-owned property.
Yeah.
It's municipal, municipal property.
Very good. One question that I did have, if I can regain that question. So could they come back at year seven and say, hey, things are going great, I'd like to renegotiate a different lease, can we terminate this one and do another one?
Potentially, but I would need to look into the legal implications on that.
Just a thought, and he hasn't asked it, so I don't intend to bring it up, but if it does come up.
Right. If you have a five-year lease, you can't do like an option to renew for six years. The most you could do would be an option to renew for five years. The original lease term cannot exceed 10 years.
Sure, sure. I just thought if it terminated early, if it's terminated, can they then go back and ask for another 10-year lease? That therefore given him a much longer term to be in the building.
And we would still have to go through the process again, where it's advertised in the paper, you all adopt a resolution, you state that there's, the city does not have a use for the property at this time, and the, the terms of the lease, how much it's being rented for and all of that, has to be done in an, in an open public meeting.
Very good. He marked out anything having to do with the requirement, that I think should be a requirement, to have some benchmarks in there, so that we see that he's making progress. He doesn't just sign a lease and does nothing for 18 months or 24 months, because he doesn't have to pay, he doesn't have to pay rent for the first two or three years, whatever you negotiate. You just want to make sure that he's taking some action. Since it's free, it's easy to sit on free, but we need to have some benchmarks just to make sure that he's coming in. I think the answer is yes. I mean, he says he wants to be in there, and this wants to be better than his other place, and he's got a great calendar of events that he does that brings a lot of people out, and that's just required to do for him to make a good living, is to have a huge calendar of events for things to happen on your property and bring people together. So I would ask you to look at their, his calendar of events for his current space, and you can kind of get a sense of what they, what they do and how it could be beneficial.
I had a question, though. The ancillary use or primary use, I can't remember which, was the distribution of his product?
That's right.
Is that reflected in here at all?
It is. He marked it out completely, that distribution. I don't know if I've gotten there yet or not.
Okay, keep going.
But yeah, he did mark that out completely, to where he wouldn't have that. I would say, we did talk to, and I don't mind quoting the company, but the, one of the current owners of Noda Brewing, we spoke with because we're, they're asking us to help them with one of their properties, or the landlord is, rather, and I learned that 1%, I think it's 1%, is that right, of their sales happens on-premise. The real money that they make is in distribution, but they keep it out there. It's like paying for advertising. They have it out there, people love it, they're packed when they're open, but it's such a small piece of their business, so I, from that aspect, I can understand his pushback. So I'm going to leave that up to you guys, is how, how you want to respond.
Say 1%?
1% of the, one of the most successful breweries in the region comes from onsite, on-premise.
Retail sales.
Retail sales.
That's of the whole, that's their wholesale. So, I mean, depending on what that 1%, that 1% could be pretty high. And Noda in North Carolina is probably one of the largest ones outside of Old Mecklenburg that distributes within North Carolina.
Yeah.
And they distribute further than North Carolina, but that 1% could be a pretty large number.
And this group does have distribution in town. I went to a, he told me they had distribution at Total Wine, and in fact, I went there Friday and saw that they had four or five different lines that were on the shelf at the time. So they are, they are doing well, so.
I know one of the reasons the board had said they were interested in a clause like that, right, was to make sure that the use was going to be supportive of a downtown, right, have that activity, have a gathering place for people, people to come to.
Yep.
And be kind of an anchor for the downtown area.
Sure.
And that was a result of that. I definitely understand where the brewery is, is coming from, right, hearing that, that's helpful, thank you. I'm curious, is there a different way, a different metric that we might be able to meet the council's goal? And I'm kind of saying this to kind of sound it off of you, to see if you agree with this idea. For example, could we say, all right, instead of a percentage of sales, could you make sure that X amount of square footage is open as a retail certain hour, a number of hours a week or something like that, so that the brewery is not able to meet these financial benchmarks, which might be silly because of the distribution being the cash cow of the business, but ensuring that there's an active retail component at the same time? So that might be a way we can meet the brewery's goals and the board's goal with downtown as well. How does that sound?
They have listed on, I mean, if you look on Google, they have listed what their current hours are for their university location. So, I mean, you can follow suit with those if those are something that worked for you. I mean, I've looked at them, they seem like they're very reasonable within the constraints of what most breweries are open. You know, they're not going to be open past probably 10 or 11 o'clock, you know, it just doesn't happen, that's just not how, that's just not their business model. They want people from 4 o'clock, 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the afternoon, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Sundays, to stay open until, could be 8, could be 9, sometimes 10 o'clock, depending on what the activities are that are going on at the brewery. So, which I think ideally fits better for the town, because you don't want them open at midnight.
Yeah.
You don't want that, you don't want that kind of activity.
Do we rely on our noise ordinance to handle that issue, or do we write something in the lease?
If it's, if it's not going to be an issue, if we want to be extra careful, that could be something we could potentially write in the.
100%.
You know, maybe there's an exception on New Year's Eve, right, or something like that, but.
We would just need to know what your noise ordinance is.
This is going to be, yeah, absolutely. This is going to be something new. We want to make sure that the business is going to be a good neighbor as well.
Correct.
So that, I think that could be absolutely something to look at.
So getting back to the 75% of the onsite business, is, he struck it out?
He did. Sorry, it's on page one, Brad, you're right.
Yeah.
So is he agreeable to negotiate that, or is he just adamant about it being zero, or?
We didn't have that conversation today, I'll be honest. That's something we'll leave up to you as to how you want to respond to him. I didn't know how to respond anyway, knowing that 1% is what one of the bigger, one of the biggest does, what's fair, and I think it's putting something into the, that Alex just mentioned, making how many square feet you're, you're going to have for retail and how many hours you're going to be open, and then writing that into the lease, that these are the hours you will be open. And there's a dark clause, that if you've been closed for so long, then you declare this null and void. If this becomes not open to the public, then the lease is null and void. If it was a, you know, retail shopping, an inline shopping center, at a Harris Teeter shopping center, if you're closed for three weeks in a row without cause, they will terminate your lease, so.
Well, I can see why he struck it out, if he's between 1 and 75, it's a big gap.
Big gap, that's right.
And most breweries, that was one of the large breweries, they, on average, most breweries are somewhere between 5 and 20%.
Got it.
As far as their retail sales.
Hope that wasn't too long-winded. If you guys have any questions?
I would just point out that, that property prior to us purchasing it, purchasing it was generating to the town about $1,500 in annual tax revenue. So when you think about it and you look at the lease rents after forgiving year three and getting the outfit built, I mean, that's a pretty nice return from what it had been. Now, that's notwithstanding, we spent a lot of money to buy it.
Right.
I think I would characterize that as banking it for future, we call it a town center, I prefer town center than a downtown, of course. Property values, activity, supporting the park and the land across the street. So I wanted to point that out. That's a nice return, notwithstanding the outlay of cash we had to make.
Very good. One of the things that, and forgive us, because we just got this, I think, late this morning, early afternoon, one of the things that Melanie had, had pointed out. Okay, we're good there. Okay. One of the things I did want to point out is, according to this, landlord that's us will be responsible for the roof, the building structure, and I believe the brewery added the words "and" the foundation, which I think is, you know, kind of what we were all envisioning there. There is some work that needs to be done on the roof. I think worst-case scenario is about $150,000 worth of work, could be significantly less. As we get in there, we need to kind of really get in there and take a look at kind of the work that needs to be done to make sure that we're holding our end of the lease. The good news is tenant is taking a lot of responsibility, other than what I'll ignorantly call the shell of the building, if you will. Roof is probably going to be our biggest cost. I think. I think on the high end, you're looking at somewhere around $150,000. Although I think there's some ways we could get that number down significantly.
How familiar is the owner with the construction that's starting out here in a year or two? The road construction?
I can't speak to that, have you had a conversation?
I have spoken to him. He is aware that it's going to be improvement and it could have some effect. Ideally, at the end of the day, we don't know. Because we don't know how it's gonna be structured or when they're gonna start, how it's gonna break up.
But it is a matter of.
I will say, I didn't have that, I had a conversation about because of the construction, the church may ask for some parking. So he does know that some parking on the front will be lost. And he was amiable to whatever the town needed for extra parking when he's not open. Or specific days that you say you need it throughout the year, whether it be, you know, a holiday that you need use of the property for, something like that, he seems amicable.
Right, so if we, I know one of the big things was, we have a handful of festivals. They aren't every week or every month necessarily, but big events where it'd be great if we could utilize some of that parking. Do you think he'd be open to that?
He sounded very open to that.
And I'm sure that could, those kind of things like Stalling Fest could in turn support his business.
That's right, yeah, big win-win, it sounds like.
Going back to the roof for just one minute. I was here when the contractor came in, and the roof actually came up in conversation.
Yeah.
And they're going to take a look at it as well.
Okay.
Just to make sure, so that would be, I think you've already gotten two quotes, if my memory serves me correctly.
I believe so.
So we'll have a third person take a look at it, put their eyes on it and just see. I can tell you that we were on the roof, myself and one of our partners, Scott Stevens. And the roof actually looks in pretty good shape. I mean, usually you'll see seams popped or some kind of issues with it, and there's not. I'm not saying I'm a roof expert, but I've been on a number of roofs over my career. And the roof looks in pretty good condition. So I, like I said, it might be good to have another person, especially that's going to be, you know, constructing what they're gonna construct over here from an interior standpoint, to take a look at it and just give some input, so.
Yeah, that's helpful, Scott, thank you.
Yeah, hopefully we can get something else to you so you can have another.
Can we potentially follow up with you? Want to see if you know any roof folks?
And I think, as we're going through this process, we'll probably have, we'll probably have something more concrete from the contractor. I'd say the next month or so.
Okay.
So hopefully they'll have a chance to get the roofer out there to take a look at it.
Cool.
All right, well, last thing, one of the ideas, counsel, that was brought to me was we have an economic development committee that has expertise in these matters. And so instead of bringing things to council, why don't we take it to the committee? Let them hash out the details and the committee bring it to the council, which like a planning board does, you know, on everything. Is that what the, we've got three of you here tonight, so two of you are on the economic development committee.
We think it would be a good idea to help, and it would help streamline the process. So instead of once a month, the negotiations, we'll be able to do it.
Great idea.
Yep, Brad?
Yeah, that's fine. What's your, on your side, what's your anticipation of the timetable we should be on? I know you're saying it's up to us, but.
Well, I think it's moving slowly on his side, so I think we have to continue to hold his feet to the fire. Get, I think he promised to get dates from the SBA today when I spoke to him. And apparently when Scott talked to him, it sounded like he promised updates on the construction budget.
I mean, his plan ideally is to be open next year and hopefully start construction, if not, around the first year.
All right, well, let's, we don't need a motion. Can I get a consent from the three council members that, Kelly Williams? Let me handle this first, and then we'll, and then start negotiations through them to help expedite it, so. All three, three to nothing. All right, now, what's your concern, Lori?
Well, I mean, I guess we already talked about it, but I've only been on the council since December, like six months. But I've heard about this for, you know, a couple of years, I guess. And then, so now I'm on the council and I just, it just doesn't sit right with me that all of a sudden they're crossing out the 75%. It's just like, this is supposed to be a downtown, not a, you know, just whatever they're doing in the back room. This is supposed to be a downtown where people, I mean, I don't go to bars, but, you know, people are gonna go on a Saturday night and, you know, eat something and meet their friends. And now it seems like they're saying it's like only certain hours and, you know, four o'clock or whatever, three, whatever they said on a Saturday. It just doesn't seem, it just seems like it's gone down from being a downtown, a place that you would go to downtown and a, the start of a downtown to distributing whatever they have, beer, is that what it is?
Okay, well, that's why we'll let our committee bring these things back to us, the conditions, and then we'll have a chance to react to them. Feelings known, just like you did. All right, thank you. Any other questions for fellows here? All right, thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Thanks for having us.
Yes, sir. All right, next up is Kevin, Slurry Pavers, Microsurfacing.
Yeah, good evening, council. I thought you had a good, I thought you all had a good weekend. Here tonight as a follow-up from the May 13th council meeting where council approved a contract with Slurry Pavers to implement what's called microsurfacing, which is a method of preventative maintenance that's applied to specific segments of roadways. And as a piece of that contract, staff incorporated an informational council session to really bring in the contractor, in this case, Slurry Pavers, talk through the process, since it's a fairly new process, talk through the product, the impact to the residents, and really just kind of open it up for Q and A, just to provide as much information upfront as possible before this work starts. And so I'll introduce Tim Herbst here from Slurry Pavers to run through his presentation and then ask any, open it up again for Q and A. And if there's any residents here from some of these affected communities, feel free to.
Residents?
Ask any questions that you may have, so.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Hi, Kevin, I'm a fellow Ohioan. I've been in North Carolina for about two and a half years now. I live in Huntersville. My company, Slurry Pavers, is based out of Richmond, Virginia. More locally, we source our liquid and our crews out of Dunn, North Carolina. We do have an existing contract, a lot of contracts with the North Carolina Department of Transportation with the same product. It's nothing new, it's been around as long as we have, since the 1960s. So like Kevin said, it is a way of preserving the road. So if you all are saying, why am I getting microsurfacing and not asphalt? It's not that you're getting one or the other, it's just it's time for microsurfacing. Meaning it's, it's like seal coating your driveway, right? You want to protect it and extend the life of it. And so that's, that's really what Micro does, and we're gonna go through this and explain what it is and how it impacts you all. What is Micro? It's part of a family of asphalts, like I said, it's been since 1930s. But this specific product has been around since the 60s, 70s. Brought around to this neck of the woods in the 1980s, there is an NC DOT spec for it. And they do reference that and started to use a bunch of it the past couple of years. 2024 was the biggest year for microsurfacing in the state of North Carolina on the DOT level. The state also has a lot of agencies like yourself that are already using it. Most notably, City of Durham, Town of Garner, Fayetteville, Greenville. So a lot of agencies are using it. And to your point there, with everything going up, people just can't afford to pave like they used to. And there's just not enough money and everything's gone up, from the tar to the gravel, to everything, labor, you name it. So like I said, we've been around for about 50 years. The product itself is not a common asphalt, okay? We take asphalt, the binder itself, and we blend it with water. And we do that via what they call surfactant, AKA soap, to make what they call an emulsion, okay? And we take that emulsion and we polymer modify it with a latex, that's what makes it hard. And so the reason it has to be hard is because we only put it down about 3/8 of an inch thick, okay? So again, we're not creating structure, we're not, we're protecting the structure. So instead of spraying something like a sealer or putting down an inch and a half or two inches of asphalt, this is a nice medium-type treatment that's meant to be put on roads that are maybe five to eight years old. Okay, along with that, latex-modified emulsion, we have a mineral filler, north of Portland cement, some water, and then aggregate, there's granite aggregate in it. So 3/8 down to sand, and it's a very, it's a very tight mix, meant to keep water out and extend the life of the road. It's mixed in a pug mill like that, not a very pretty operation, goes down the road about 200 feet a minute and then installs a surface that when it goes down, it's brown. And then as the water and the chemicals react, the water gets up out of it and goes from brown to black. And then that's the final riding surface. The design life of it is in upwards of eight years, and the price is commensurate. So for what we were doing on your all's roads, we're spending probably about a fourth of what it would cost to overlay, so.
Is it cured by heat, or?
It is actually, it's a great question. It's actually with Slurry Seal, which is its parent product, that needed the sun and everything to cure out. With microsurfacing, it's a chemical cure, and a chemical break and a chemical cure. So what, the majority of the DOT's projects are at night, it doesn't need the sun. It's all based on chemical, chemical reaction.
Is that in the polymer?
No, that is actually an additive to it.
And what was, is it additive proprietary, or?
No, no, it's not. It's, and that's how Slurry Seal and microsurfacing are differentiated. One, the latex, that modification, and then two, the additive. So it's, depending upon the heat and humidity, we can speed the product up or slow it down. So if we're dealing with cooler temperatures in the fall, we want to speed that up. With the heat and humidity in the summer, we want to slow that down. So that additive is what controls that.
Is that some type of oxidizer, or?
No, no, it's just an additive. The brand name, I'm not allowed to say, no, I'm just kidding.
I'm in the chemical business, that's why I'm asking.
I'm not, I'm not a chemist by trade, so that's about as far as I know.
Last question, is it some type of peroxide?
A peroxide?
Peroxide.
No.
Yeah, methyl ethyl peroxide, okay.
Oh, boy, you're over my head.
I got a real technical, you said brown to black.
Brown to black.
Good, I'm good.
There you go.
That's about my.
That's all you need to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. We talked about cost already, very expensive to mill. You talked about the ecology of it, we're thought of about as a green product. It's not hot like asphalt, so it's about 100 degrees, you can stick your hand in, it's not gonna burn. And with asphalt, you're creating issues related to the environment, and that's not what we are. We do a lot of work in parks also. The reason I'm talking like this.
It's not how hot to begin with.
No.
Like asphalt is, does it get heated like?
No. As hot, as hot as it is, as hot as it ever is is when it's brought right out to the truck and then it cools down from there. Within, we'll get into the workings of it, and I can show you.
Kevin, in the public works, you all have your roads rated, right? And so they're picking roads that are qualified for this particular product. So they're not putting it on bad roads, they're not putting it on really good roads. It's roads that I said, you know, maybe four or five to eight years old, somewhere in that range, that the life has started and you're seeing some cracking, you're seeing some oxidation, maybe some raveling. And that's what Micro has done, just like sealing your road or your driveway. You're sealing this off and providing life at a, much less the cost than paving. This is just kind of a what to do and when, based on that rating. If you really want to, just quickly, if you can see the gray line that drops down a lot, that's, it's, you've paved and you've done nothing and it's failed. You pave it again, it fails. So if you do the blue line, you do a bunch of little maintenance treatments, the cost is substantially less to do the little treatments compared to the expense of milling fills. But do they really work? This is kind of the tale of two townships that's up in New York, actually. But this road was paved in 2004 with a two-and-a-half-inch hot mix overlay, all right? And so the, in 2010, this, the road on the right received a crack seal and microsurfacing, like we're doing for the town Stallings. The photo was taken in 14, so the microsurfacing on the right is four years old and the road on the left with nothing done to it is 10. And then taken in 2018, you can see the benefit of doing maintenance, right? The road, the half of the road on the left, much more expensive. Road on the right, it invested three to four dollars a square yard back in 2010, still going strong. And that's the goal, to keep it, keep it in good condition and minimize your maintenance and minimize the cost of having to mill it prematurely.
Well, so on that photograph, both sides were two-and-a-half-inch milled?
In 2004.
Okay, got you.
Yep. So in 14 years later, that's, we're doing a treatment versus not, that's the result. Process, okay, so we contracted, right? So now we're doing what we call community outreach, I'm sorry to talk with my back to you, where we let you all know what's about to happen, let the residents know what's gonna happen. Kevin has sent out letters to invite them to come, some have come, most have not. But what we're also gonna do when we get ready to come into town, which is expected to be latter part of July at this juncture, weather has a play in that. But we come to town and we're going to post in the right-of-ways, you know, you know, you cannot park on the streets. They're gonna put door hangers out and have all the information on it that you can imagine, including this Slurry, excuse me, neighborhoodslurry.com, and it's all gonna be slash Stallings. And it'll go right to our website. And it'll let the residents know what it is, what to expect, what not to expect, how long to stay off of it, et cetera, et cetera. And then the dates will be, that we're affecting, it will be circled, and then it'll have the foreman's name and his phone number and an email address. So total transparency as to what's going on, if you have any questions, call.
Well, you mentioned how long you have to stay off of it, can you get on it quicker than you would asphalt?
No, it's actually the opposite. Yeah, so let's get into this and answer that question. So, first thing, and what we're going to be doing, which is part of the contract, is crack sealing. We're gonna come in and crack seal all the existing cracks. But prior to that, Kevin and his staff have agreed to go in and do asphalt repairs. And anything that's failed currently is going to be replaced with new asphalt, just those isolated areas. There's not a ton of them, there's one back here on Shirley. And then there's a couple out on Scarlet and then the Hunley Ridge subdivision, there's a handful of them. So those need to be patched off to grade. The second thing that's gonna have to happen is the edge growth of the grass and weeds from the side. It's gonna have to be clipped back, revealing the straight line of the existing road, okay? And they've agreed to do that. And then in the curb and gutter section with weeds growing between the asphalt and the gutter pan, that is gonna be sprayed with herbicide, and then that will be eradicated. And then we'll come in and crack seal all roads and then overlay it with microsurfacing. So there'll be a two, a two-part system. One, the crack sealers will come through, they're very non-intrusive. It's a very fluid, mobile operation, that they'll have cones and flaggers out, letting them know which way to travel and around this crew. But there'll be a water truck following behind, cooling the crack seal down. So they won't have to worry about tracking or anything like that. Patching we just talked about. And then the microsurfacing gets installed. The brown to black, right, is probably about 15 minutes. That's how long it takes to go from brown to black, and then until the time you can walk on it, all right? To put traffic on it, you can cross on it probably in about 15 minutes. Like if you're coming out of that driveway and one lane is paved up against that driveway and the other isn't, you can cross over that black pavement, new microsurfacing, onto the unpaved lane. Try not to turn your wheels into the new stuff, and then once you get to the. to the unpaved lane, turn your wheels and go. When that paved lane is done, then it will be open to traffic, and we'll flip-flop and we'll pave the other lane. Okay? So, little bit of a learning curve, this is not compacted asphalt, okay? It's out the back of a machine, there's a rubber strike-off on the back of the box, and that is it. The traffic is the compacting mechanism. All right? So, I usually don't like to say it, but it is what it is, the, the least attractive micro-surfacing looks is when it very first goes down, because it hasn't had traffic on it yet. So, the first week passes, it looks better. The second week passes, it looks even better. In a month or so, people can't tell the difference between asphalt and micro-surfacing. Okay? So there'll be a little bit of a, it's, it's just a different process, and people won't be used to it. But, once we get to an intersection, we'll tape off that intersection at the end, and they'll pave onto it so as to create a nice straight line. Like I said, brown when initially placed, traffic ready, that time between traffic being on is usually hour, hour and a half, not long. So when we get started in the morning and people get home at night, your, your road will be done. In the event, oh my gosh, you know, I've, I've cut half my arm off and I got to get to the emergency room, can you cross him? Absolutely. You know, if it hasn't been 15 minutes, absolutely. And we can always patch those areas. Do people always read the, the hangers that are hanging on their doors? No, they don't. Some people don't. So they may not know exactly, but we'll have traffic crews and flaggers moderating the whole thing, so if there are any questions, we can answer those. Once cones have been lifted, the, the road will be done, and then, and, you know, deemed good to drive on from there on out. Just showing you some pictures of, we do have some cul-de-sacs. Yeah, but cul-de-sacs are not the, the most fun thing to do. You know, you've, depending upon how big it is, you're going to pull, make a circle around the back end, then you're going to pull out, pull out, pull out, pull out, pull out, pull out, so you're going to have a lot of seams, but those work their way in as time goes on and traffic drives on it. The, the aggregate I talked about will, the, some of the medium-sized stones work their way to the top and are kicked off with traffic. We do, we bring a sweeper in a couple weeks after, and we sweep up any, any residual aggregate laying in the gutter pan, won't have to worry about that, and the non-curb and gutter sections. Cooperation is key, you know, if, if there, look for signs, look for flaggers, look for the, the truck driving back and through. If you need to get out, let somebody know. All right? No parking signs are there, I don't think we ever discussed, is there a line item for towing or anything of that nature? Or how would we address that?
We'll...
Talked about in the pre-con?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we just want to make sure that all the cars are off the road. All right. New asphalt surfaces, in this environment, a heat and humidity can scuff, same thing with micro. All right? It heals itself, meaning that when traffic runs on it, you know, it'll, it'll work itself out. So, that is asphalt on the right. It's brand-new asphalt that scuffs with people moving in and out of their, their driveways. It happens, that's new asphalt. So it is to be expected with new asphalt, the same is to be expected with, with micro-surfacing. Like I said, over time, it will go away as traffic runs on it. There's the, the website, neighborhoodslurry.com. It takes you right to our deal, where you can peruse all the different products, what they're comprised of, what to expect, what to do, what not to do, et cetera. So, we'll take any questions.
Kevin, what's the next road that's lined up to have this done?
So we've got three, three subdivisions that are lined up for this treatment. Community Park, right back here, Hunley Creek, that entire subdivision, and then what's called Independence Village, which is a smaller community across from Stallings Elementary, off of Stallings Road, just, just north of Stallings Elementary.
You want to do all three at one time, will you, or will you?
Well, I mean, they'll do them in succession.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're going to have three different crews?
No, 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 no. One crew and get one done, knock it out, and go to the next one.
Kevin? So when we approved the budget, or set in anticipation of spending X amount of dollars over the next areas, it was on this PCI rating, and the premise that you mentioned, early intervention midway through is cheaper than letting it fail and all that.
Sir.
That was all budgeted or modeled, modeled in the context of milling and resurfacing, I think. Maybe not. This feels new, and not contemplated in that curve of road PCI ratings. Does that make sense? And is it, am I right about that? Does this change anything in the model?
It does not.
This is the technology that we...
In the, in the model, this is the preventative maintenance, which you'll frequently hear me mention.
Okay, got it.
So yes, this was incorporated in that.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yep. So the, the goal of, of agencies, and I'll use Durham as an example, is when they pave a road, their goal was now to get 50 years of life out of that road before the next asphalt hits it.
Wow.
How do you do that? You know, you do rejuvenators, you do crack sealing, and you do micro. What they're doing now is they're re-micro-surfacing old micro-surfacing currently. So, the roads we just did, some of the, well, some of the roads we did this year, and this year's program for them was just about $5 million. They, we were paving nine-year-old micro-surfacing with new micro. So, if you do it the right way, to your point, Brad, you know, when, when you have a study done, you know, there is a, you know, a way to approach those numbers, but if you approach them from based on condition, it can kind of eat you up sometimes, because you're kind of, you're chasing this and chasing that. So the goal is not to move, or is to move from condition to almost a programmed approach, where at year X, we know we're going to do this to these roads that are this year old. Year X, we're going to do this, and this is how we're going to extend and get the most, most years out of our, our pavements. So, you know, they, Durham has done all of the studies to show that this is what is economically the best bang for their buck, and, and a lot of local agencies like yourself are following suit.
All righty. Well, Kevin, thanks for bringing this to us. Any more questions?
I do have a question. How many Stallings businesses will you be utilizing with doing projects? Or are you bringing every one in from your, your group?
Well, there is a DB, DB, is that what she's on? I'm bringing all my own people in.
Okay.
If, there are certain goals you have to meet, certain, and, and we, we meet those a variety of ways, with either flagging or trucking, not so much with suppliers, because those are, have to be state-approved and pretty consistent. But yeah, we, we bring a lot, it's kind of odd that most of our crews actually live and have families in West Virginia. But they'll be coming here.
And what is that, DB going on this project?
I didn't read the contract, I...
I'd need to verify that.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All righty, next up is our event attendance policy, is that what we call it? Vendor, vendor attendance policy. All righty. Well, what came up is, we have a policy, obviously, against any political group coming to have a booth at any of our events to advance their agenda. And then the Board of Elections wanted to have a booth at the latest event, and it was against our policy, but I thought it was the Board of Education when I saw BOE, and so that's caused me some concern, but it's, it's Board of Elections. And so, I thought we need to discuss, do we need to have some type of amendment to our policy to allow the Board of Elections coming out to do voter registration? You know, they're not promoting one party or the other, they're just wanting to get people registered to vote. So, that's my point of bringing it to the council tonight. That's it.
So, I'm sure we have some background you could give us on our current policy and...
Yes, and I think if Unis could come up and maybe give you the background.
Yeah, thank you. So, good afternoon, council. So just a little bit background on how we got here. You know, it was one of those things, we've never been asked by the BOE Board of Elections to come to one of our events, so this is something that's a little bit new for us, a hurdle that, you know, definitely not impossible to overcome. So as we currently sit, the only vendors we allow to come to the park that are setting up, that are not doing a service towards the event are sponsors. So what they have to do is they have to pay a fee, they get a booth space, they provide that, but it was kind of a way for us to make sure we're not over-stimulating the events with vendors that don't necessarily match the intention of the event. So that was the purpose of why we're kind of moved forward with that. However, if you guys are interested in adding someone like the BOE to these events, that's something that Alex and I kind of talked about, maybe putting a policy in place that we just charge them a separate vendor fee possibly, and then we limit how many of these types of government-affiliated vendors can come. It would just be putting a new policy in place, bringing it to you guys to either approve it or deny. I've asked a few other municipalities how they have handled the BOE at their events, and for example, Indian Trail treats them like a regular vendor, and they actually charge them a fee to come. However, they set up everything, tear it all down, and they're just ran like a normal vendor. But that is definitely something that we could create a policy and bring back to you guys, and make sure that we're meeting all the requirements of that.
Well, listening to that policy of Indian Trail, though, it seems like it opens themselves up to just any vendor, and we don't want that, we don't...
Correct.
BOE's non-political, so that's...
It feels, it feels very similar, Mayor, to the discussion we had about using this building and the lobby for parties, events, gatherings from our citizens, and it's that First Amendment thing, if you allow one group to do it, you can't set time, place, and manner, you can or cannot, what's the law term? I'm not a lawyer.
You could, where, when, and how you can, time, place, and manner you can. You can't discriminate based on their viewpoint.
Right.
So it has to be content neutral, so no matter what the message is, you can't tell one group, no, you know, we don't agree with your viewpoint or your message, so you can't use the space.
Yes, I'm concerned about events in the park or other town-owned properties having to accept applications from all viewpoints, because some may be offensive. Not that I would disagree with, with, that that wouldn't be the reason I would be, but they just might be patently offensive, and, and, to your point, not relate to the theme you've worked so hard to create in the event. So is there a way to do a carve-out for a certain type that the Board of Elections would fit within? That's governmental, not, not, not even nonprofit, what's the, what's the...
I think governmental, public service is, is what we would call it, and it's just because they're providing a, a service, and they're not necessarily pushing one message or another. So that's, it's not a commercial activity, and it's not a nonprofit, right, trying to garner support for their cause, or raise money, or funds, or awareness. But it's more of a, like if the police department wanted to set up a booth, you know, to maybe encourage people to apply for the police department, or if you had vacancies on the planning board, right? There could be a town booth asking people to apply for a planning board. So it's more of just a government...
Yeah, because the council gets a booth at Stallings for us, and don't pay for that. So yeah, there's going to be a way, and what you just said makes sense to me, so...
Two, two things I'm hearing, though, there's the definition of what the public service group would be, how that's written, and then the secondary decision about is there a cost? They are, they're, they're independent of each other, right?
Right.
I'd be okay with the staff bringing back a draft policy on that recommendation, if that's where you're headed. I don't...
Yeah, that's where I'm heading, so what's...
And then we can, we can review it at another meeting. Is that...
Yeah, that sounds great. Would y'all be interested in adding the cost and seeing what that looks like, similar to what Indian Trail charges them, or would y'all rather just this Phoebe way? Just so I know what direction to...
We're mentioning Indian Trail a lot tonight. Are they doing something really well?
They're the closest in proximity to us.
The Honorable Clarence "Also" Brooks is in the audience tonight.
So, yeah.
Indian Trail, I'm...
Yeah. I respect their Parks Director a lot, and he has a lot of good advice. He helps me nine times out of 10. So, it's, it's really whatever direction you guys wanted to do.
May I ask you a question? I'll just wave it.
Okay, that's perfect.
It's me.
Wave it on the policy, or we just...
Wave it for the governmental service agency.
But when we write the policy, when they write the policy?
Yeah, no fee.
Do you want me to provide a little bit of background on that? I think Union County, right, has come and wanted to do booths and things like that before, and I think Indian Trail said, okay, if you don't charge us a fee for your events, we won't charge you a fee, right? Because they, they pay permitting fees and all these other fees all the time to the county. And the county said, yeah, we're not interested in that. So, that's, that's my understanding of the background, is that right?
That's correct. For example, to have an inflatable or anything out there, we pay the county to have that per inflatable. So there is a policy in place. That's just one example of a fee.
Yes, the question too might be, is there a cost to us, right, of them coming? Do we have to set anything up, right? That's something to consider, right? Is there, is there a staff time cost, or is it just here's your spot?
I, I think the harder part's the definition, the easy part's the cost. I, I'm okay to wave if that's where we end up, but I'm also more concerned about the definitional aspect of a public service group.
I'm in agreement there, and I'm looking, not somewhat, the first BOE that we thought it was, the Board of Education. Board of Ed does a whole lot of things that are totally non-political, but there's occasion when they have to put a bond on the ticket, on the ballot, and they might want to come pushing a bond at one of our events, or any of the events, and then it becomes a political, 90% of what they want to talk about, maybe the bookmobile, or they want to bring the bookmobile to one of our events and show it off. I got no problem with that. I don't think I would be as eager to have them come, anybody come and push a bond, or not a bond, or, because that would get another group wanting to counter it. How, how, I guess that's what I'm...
That's the definition of both organization and allowable activities. I mean, they're both in the definition. The Board of Elections can't come and promote a candidate. So that's the definition of what it is, and what you're allowed to do when you're either paying or not. That's what I'm thinking we're talking about, right?
Right.
That's why you guys probably should come back to...
Yeah, and I, I think there's a fine line between, yeah, between providing a service and pushing a message, too.
Yeah, that's why I don't like it.
Well, Unis, tonight, we, we asked the Economic Development Committee to get involved in this issue, so why don't you contact your, your committee and...
I would gladly, we meet tomorrow, so that's perfect.
Get some input from them, and tell them what we've said tonight, and bring us something back, working with Melanie, and make sure it's...
Yeah, that sounds great.
All right.
I'll be talking to you. Thank you, council.
All right, thank you, Unis.
Counsel, in the meantime, just so everybody's on the same page, we'll keep the policy as is right now. We'll come back and bring y'all a, a draft policy for y'all to consider and react to. Sound good?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, sounds good. Thank you, Alex, thank you, Unis. All right, next up is our Town Manager Contract Amendment. Any questions?
Move approval of the new contract for Alex.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Scholl. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Eyes have it, is unanimous?
Thank you, council, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Laurie, second by Mr. Scholl. All in favor? Eyes have it. Thank y'all.